Our meeting to order here, Cadillac Planning Commission here for the date of January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. And having said that, if everyone would please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those that follow us, we did not have a meeting in December. This is why we have minutes here from November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. So Ms. Danielle will give us a roll call before I get too far.
No problem. Philkins?
Here.
Host?
Here.
Rice?
Here.
Bunce?
Here.
Blasher?
Here.
Baumann? Fent?
Here.
Putman?
Here. Thank you. Okay. Approval for this evening's agenda again for January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four.
So.
Mayor.
Second.
And Ms. Margaret. I gotta get you safe. You're gonna hit me, I know. I know. Sorry.
Putman?
Yes.
Blasher?
Yes. Who did you call? Blasher?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Baumann?
Sounded like Baumann.
Bunce?
Here. Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Thank you again. Okay. Now I need an approval for November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting minutes.
I read them all.
I move that we approve.
I'll second. I'll second it.
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
Baumann? Fent?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Blasher?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes. Thank you again. Okay, this evening, we have a public hearing. This is the kind of people, crowd we get, but okay, anyway. We've had some, a lot of people here, but this ain't tonight. So we have a special land use application filed by, filed by, hmm, New Hope Shelter slash DBA New Hope Center, owner of the building located at eleven-twenty-five Lincoln Street to allow for building of an additional operations building. Having read that, Mr. Wallace is gonna...
Uh, yes, the applicant representative tonight is with us, Chris Crowley. After I get done with my presentation, if you have other questions, he's here to respond. The business at the site, of course, is classified in the zoning ordinance as a combination group family shelter. The zoning district for the site is the RM-two. Um, I, s- some of you older members will remember, we approved this special land use a few years ago. And at that time, we rezoned the property into the RM-two prior to approving the special land use permit. Tonight's application, of course, is on the same site. The building that is being proposed is, uh, to the southwest of where the current building is. Um, you can see here, you have the edge of the parking lot going off the west side. If you look on this side, well, you, the parking lot wasn't fully in here, but you can see that white, wider area in front of the building, that was the parking lot. Off the west edge of that parking lot is where this photo is, and that's where the building will be located. It'll be north of the edge of this parking lot, so the trees that you see out to the south of the edge of this parking lot were requesting be retained when the building is built. The other thing that is involved in the application, this building, which was an accessory building, was placed in front of the primary building, which was not allowed by zoning ordinance. This building will be relocated to the north of the new building, which will put it into conformance with the zoning ordinance. And the dumpster that you see there will also be screened per the ordinance requirements. The site layout, you can see here, southwest of the primary building is the location of the new thirty-by-forty building. The smaller square just north of that is the accessory building that I just showed you in the photograph. And of course, there's a note on the right side of the document indicating that the dumpster will be screened per the ordinance requirement. The actual date when we approved this was in November of two thousand and eighteen, where both the special use was approved and the site plan was approved at that meeting. And it included the primary structure and the parking lot. At that time, we also had the department head review prior to the approval of the site plan, and that was also approved through the department head's site plan review. Right now, the new building, they're applying for an amendment to that special land use and site plan to add a thirty-four, thirty-by-forty operations building. And what we mean by this is that building will be involved in storage of, you know, the food operation and other general storage. It'll also have a hot room. They need a hot room, which will, uh, they can raise the temperature to a certain temperature that will kill bugs that might be coming in on any belongings of the people that will be living there. So it's kind, especially bed bugs, so it's a key piece to the operation to make sure that the facility is kept clean and bug-free, so that's an important thing. There will not be any addition to new resident capacity, which I probably might have raised some additional issues, given our discussion of this use back in the beginning, but there will be no additional bed capacity as part of this new building. I believe I covered this slide already. Uh, the site and neighborhood character. The New Hope Shelter site is located two blo- two blocks north of Division Street and is located immediately east of the new jail site. You're probably all somewhat familiar with that. In addition to the primary shelter building, there are several semi-trailers located northwest of the building, of the primary building, which are used for storage. These trailers are to be removed from the site when the new building is built. Another reason for this building is to clean up the site and to have it look more appropriate. Since this site has already been approved for the New Hope Shelter as a special land use, the focus of this amendment is really on the site plan element for the new operations building. We're not changing the use in any way or adding to the use in the way of new, new residents. Um, the land to the west of the site, as was shown on the aerial photograph, was the new county jail. The vacant land located just south of New Hope Shelter is zoned in the R-two district, which is primarily a single-family district. The vacant land located to the east of the site is zoned in the R-one district, which is also primarily, primarily a single-family district. And the land directly south of the jail is currently planned for future county use. They have recently come in and are requesting a street vacation to allow for a new county building to be built there. I think their primary offices are, will probably be moving off of Lake, uh, Lake Street and moving over to that area. So we're just in the beginning stages of ha- of having that happen. Of course, this is the site plan, which was shown previously. The proposed new one thousand two hundred square foot building, which is thirty-by-forty, is proposed to be built off the west edge of the existing parking lot. The existing accessory shed, shed, which is now located on the east edge of the parking lot, will be moved to the rear of the new building, and a five-foot sidewalk will be, will connect the new building with the accessory building. The existing retention pond, which is now located where the proposed building will be, will be relocated to the west of the new building. The existing dumpster, which is located on the east edge of the parking lot, will be screened in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The semi-trailers located to the northwest of the primary building will be removed from the site. The site plan, as proposed before you tonight, has already been approved by the department head's site plan review and the city engineer's approval. So in terms of drainage and setbacks and all those types of things, all those requirements have been met. Uh, staff recommendations. Staff recommends that the proposed new building and site plan be approved subject to the following conditions: that the semi-trailers be removed from the site within six months of completion of the new building; that as much of the existing vegetation just south of the new building be retained as kind of a buffer to the building from the, from the roadway; that the exist- existing accessory building be relocated per the, per the plan prior to an occupancy permit being granted for the new building; and that the screening of the dumpster be completed prior to an occupancy permit being granted for the new building. And of course, your action tonight, you could approve, approve with conditions or deny the proposed site plan. If you want to, I imagine you can also discuss the uses, but I see those consistent with the general operation of the facility. And with that, that's the end of my presentation, and I don't know if you wanna have, see if Chris wants to add anything that I might have missed.
Yeah, please. Chris, just wanna come forwards there and please?
Well, he covered it pretty good. Um, yeah, the main thing is there is to have a ten-by-fifteen food room for our non-perishable items, things that don't freeze, so like your rice, noodles, different things like that. Right now, we have a very small pantry that we're putting our food in, and then we also a ten-by-ten hot box room, so that can go up to a hundred and forty degrees. It'll kill any type of bug. Cockroaches are questionable, they say, but I seen this down at Saginaw Rescue Mission that they have, and allows the, right now, what we do is we put everything in a washer. Washer doesn't kill bed bugs, so that's the main thing we're trying not to bring in, 'cause it costs a lot of money. It costs about five grand to treat it. And if you're familiar, Cadillac Oasis had it not too long ago, where they had to exit everyone for like two or three weeks. So that's another cost that you'd have to do on top of that. So we don't wanna have that happen. Hence why we have a lot of our stuff in the building has steel studs, things like that in there to try to, 'cause that's what the bed bug's like, is wood. So we're wanting to have that ten-by-ten in there, so when people come in, the stuff we still wash, we can put stuff in the dryer, but like your backpack, if they have a luggage, or if we happen to have an outbreak, we can't put a sofa or a bed or anything in our little hot box. We have a hot box now, it's like four-by-four. Where that ten-by-ten room, we can put any of that and treat it in there. Another thing, I guess, if, I didn't learn, 'cause I didn't have kids, but a lot of the Cadillac schools have lice, and that goes around with elementary kids. We had a couple of those outbreaks this year. I could take, so if they're sitting on the chair, I can take that right into the hot box. You know, I can put one in my little one, but if we had like the love seat or sofa or something, we don't have a way to treat it. And so that's another reason for that hot box. And then the rest of the area remaining will be our other supplies, our linens, bedding, different things like that, and then our supplies for like when we need extra beds, um, not extra beds, but when our beds wear out, we're able to bring those in, or when we have a, we have seven sets of washer and dryer, so we always like to have one on hand, so when one goes out, we can go ahead and replace it and not have to wait to order it. Same with our stoves and our refrigerator, so that's what the main use of it is. And putting that over there, too, it moves our, the little space in between where the shed is and the operations building, that's where our new smoking area will be, so the, if you drive by now, you probably see them out by the dumpsters, kind of a nice one. Now they'll be kinda hidden over there off-site, so you won't see them as much. So it's also a barrier for that. Any questions?
And I read in some of your stuff, you're, uh, gonna have cameras out there at the new?
Yep.
Stuff, which is good.
Yeah, we have thirty-five cameras set right now in our building, in or outside, and we do have one on the shed that's out there now, but we're gonna put, we'll move probably at least four over there, so you have on each side of the building to monitor everything.
Did you mention that the new building won't be heated?
Um, at this, well, the, at least the ten-by-fifteen.
Absolutely, that will be.
Yeah. That'll have a little bit of heat in there, so it won't, um, freeze anything if we do have to store canned goods or anything other, but the main goal for that is to dry non-perishable items out there. And then, of course, there is a little bathroom wash area, so that would be heated there, too, um, like a utility sink, and because we get a lot of the donations come in, and a lot of times, for example, when we get stuff from FedEx, we never know what we're gonna get. We open up the box and it's an opened dish soap or laundry detergent, so it's all over the mess and everything, you're trying to clean that up. And so that way, we have a sink and a little toilet there real quick that we can clean that up with, or if you get really dirty from doing landscape work and everything else.
Chris, how do you get a room that hot?
So.
Can you use a standard furnace for that, or you have to do something different?
You have a special heater. So we have the same heaters right now that we would just put in there, so in our old shelters, what you do is you seal up the room as best you can, and you got running off two breakers, and it heats up to a hundred and forty degrees.
Electric heat?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll just be in there. We just use that same heater that we have, but we'll, um, when they put the electrical and stuff in, it'll be ran off two breakers, to make sure nothing blows.
Have you had any breakouts? You didn't mention it, so I'm.
Not the new place. We, nope. We've done our best. We do have a pest control that sprays every quarter, and also does for other stuff, mice and everything. We've actually been really fortunate over there with that every quarter and everything else that we have. And like I said, we had some lice there, but that was stuff that, I guess, you know, if you have young kids, you deal with a lot, but it never spread outside of the family unit or wherever it was at, so.
Nice, nice.
The old shelter, we did. That's why we didn't wanna bring it in. When we had the separate shelters, the men were, um, known for that over there. Old house, wood house, pretty much it needed to be treated. We treated it several times, but, you know, it can cost a lot.
Oh, agreed. What duration, I, this silly question, at a hundred and forty degrees does it take to wipe these things out?
So depending on what the material is in there, it only takes about two minutes for them to die, but if they're embedded into the mattress or into the sofa or anything, it takes typically, you wanna run it four to six hours, just to make sure. But it doesn't take long with the heat. That's why the hot box inside, it gets it pretty quick, but that's if they're, if it was sitting right here on there, it's gonna kill it in less than two minutes. Heat's the only thing that does kill it. They can survive like in this weather eighteen months till they feed again. It's crazy.
You could freeze them out. Well, so's what I don't know.
No. Heat is about the only thing that, and some chemicals, which you try to stay away from, especially being in the building with kids and adults and everybody.
Nice. Uh, any problem with any of the requests that staff has laid out as far as the semi-tractor trailers and?
Nope, I've been wanting them gone for a while, 'cause we plan to put a garden there to help, to put fresh produce we can put in the shelter, and then also gives the clients some things to learn, so when they get on their own place. So, yeah, we're, I can't wait till they get out of there. We use one of them right now that's got all my extra bedding and stuff like I have right now, clothing, different things that we have in tubs, so as soon as we can get that, put into that building, it'd be great.
Awesome.
Couple of them are ready, empty and ready to sell, just a matter of, we got snow now, just trying to get them out.
Gotcha. Okay. How many, uh, 'cause I, I know when we approved this, that you were gonna sell off the other locations. Um, do you, what do you have left?
The ones in the city are all been sold. We still have the one in Herring Township, the women's shelter, that we still have that, that I use temporarily for storage, and we're slowly emptying that out to either use that for, um, future income, rental income into the shelter, or if another agency or another nonprofit agency, you know, there's a sho- shortage on housing. But it's an eight-bedroom house, it's not too many eight-bedroom people out there looking for, so it's gotta be a very unique family situation.
Agreed.
But yeah, the others were, we sold two of them, the one by the hospital on Lynn Street, both of those were sold to help pay for this one. Then the other two, the hospital owned, one caught fire, and the other one they took over.
Right. Anyone have anything else for Chris before I open a public hearing? Cool. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing, uh, for the special land use here to do a thirty-by-forty building and other improvements that we were filled in by staff, so what do you think? Board? I think it's a needed thing.
The nice thing is everything's already approved, so all the conditions have been, been given, and they're going to be met. This is an easy one.
Agreeing. And based on that, take the ball and run. You haven't been here in a while.
Yeah, but I forget how to do that.
I know you have. You've been on here.
Did you open the public hearing?
I did. I, yes, I did that. I said, "I'm opening a public hearing on a special land use so they can build a thirty-by-forty building." Does anyone have any comments? The one guy gave his already, so this is, but keep tracking me here, 'cause I am getting older.
Do we need to close that before we can enter the motion?
Yeah. So if, if everybody here is good, and everybody out there is good?
We're good.
Sweet.
The hell, you okay?
Yes?
Yep.
See? At this time, to stay on board, I will close the public hearing now that I, thought I opened. Okay. Uh, now I can entertain other things there.
I'll make a motion that.
Yes, sir.
We approve the recommendation, um, by the staff with the staff recommendations outlined there that the trailers.
One through four.
One through four, so however we wanna word that.
Danielle's messed up.
Got it.
I'll second that. That I remember. Oh, perfect. Seconded by Mr. Fent. Roll call, please.
Fent?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Baumann?
Philkins? Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Host?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Blasher?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Makes sense to me.
Okay, having, having done that. New business. We haven't had some of these things for a little bit. Kind of surprised to see them come back, but, so, we have some new business with, uh, vote for officers and vote for meeting dates, so that's in the very back of our packet. And I've already been caught up to speed on the one date, 'cause I wondered why February twenty-eighth was in the mix, 'cause that's a Wednesday. I got the explanation.
Yes. So, did you wanna give that, or you want me to?
Yes, please. I'm, I'm looking at you.
So the only date that we had to change was the February meeting date due to the election. This room is going to be overtaken by our clerk for two days, so we had to push that to Wednesday, because the previous week, it will be, um, held by a council meeting, so we thought Wednesday might be a good fit.
So, not knowing how that's gonna work into everybody's schedule, I'm just pointing out, it's a Wednesday, so. Anyway. Okay, and, and apparently, we're having officers or something. We used to do that in the past.
Yes. So the bylaws state that at the January meeting, the board shall select from its membership a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a secretary, who shall serve for a twelve-month period and who shall be eligible for reelection. So we're not saying anyone has to step down. This is just routine business that should be happening every year.
And the secretary will tend to be ceremonial. You'll have the title, but you'll, you'll rarely have to, to do anything in connection with that.
Kevin, she asked me, "Did we have a secretary?"
I don't think we ever have. It would be me, 'cause I don't do anything.
Perfect.
It's the job to have.
Uh, Marcus, did you have something?
I was gonna say, just what John said.
Well, thank you. Okay, so Mr. Baumann's not here. Do we wanna put him in something?
We used to do that to Denny Benson all the time, remember?
Yeah, yeah, I do. That was always our plan. Who's not here? Yes. Okay. All right, what else? What do you, do you need us to do something?
Yeah, so nominate someone for chair, if everyone thinks that.
Are you still good with chair?
Well, I don't know, I'm getting.
Does anybody else?
The mayor is helping me, so sure, I guess, yeah.
And you, you can do it by a slate, or you can do it by individual position, whatever you prefer.
Is anybody else interested, I guess, is the question? Any other fools in here?
Thanks. I like you, too.
I understand, John, you've been, been at it a while, so it, it seems like you're good to go.
Well, you gotta have white hair, so it's one of you two guys.
Oh.
Where there is.
Dave.
He's got more white hair, so that makes him chairman.
So we need to have a vote?
You can do a slate.
Do a slate.
All of them.
Oh, okay.
There, okay. So you, do you still want your position, sir?
I've been traveling too much. It's not fair, so if I, you can't be here, it's very difficult for me to be here. So I'd appreciate if somebody else could take that.
Okay. So we have a vice chair opening, is?
I've done the chairman's once.
I think so.
In ten years, maybe twice. But, so it's not like you get called on all the time. It's not that difficult. Everything's on the paper.
Well, I've got enough on my plate. Someone I know that is fully qualified is Ms. Peggy Host, but.
I can do it.
But do you want to do it?
Well, that's why.
One time in ten years, I think I can manage it.
It's not that difficult.
So.
Perfect.
Okay.
I think we have our slate then.
And then we need a secretary.
So.
Again, I don't think, I've never had one. I've been doing this for twenty-five years.
So.
Humor us and have a secretary.
Okay. Would you like to be the secretary?
Can we vote for you?
Can you get voted for?
I cannot be voted for a secretary, 'cause I am not on the board, but will I perform the duties of a secretary? Yes.
Perfect.
Recovered.
Come on, Bunce, let's, let's be a secretary.
I was gonna say, he just got reelected or appointed, so he's, he's back in the game. He was terminated before we got here.
Okay, there's the slate.
There's the slate. There we go.
Okay.
All right. Ready? Blasher?
Yes.
Bunce?
Yes.
Fent?
Yes.
Putman?
Yes.
Baumann?
Host?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you all.
Congratulations, everybody.
Hey, Marcus is buying when we leave for all the newly people. Okay, old business, nothing. Board member comments. Uh, the ice tree is awesome.
Motion for meeting dates, please.
Who what? Oh, sorry, I'm just moving right down this thing. John said get us out of here.
I'll make that motion to, um, approve the slate of meeting dates as presented.
I'll second that.
All right. Philkins.
Yes.
Host.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Blasher.
Yes.
Bowman. Fenton.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Man, the mayor's covering me tonight, I bet. I heard something.
I just want to know how they got, pink on this side and white on this side.
Well, that's obviously, um, what she was typing, that document, had a purple-black background.
It's, it's early paper for Valentine's Day.
Okay.
Our printer decided to act up.
I'm sitting there going like this in the light going.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now I'm back to old business, being nothing. Board member comments, folks? I'm staying with my one statement, ice tree is awesome.
It, it's nice to see.
With the weather we've had and whatnot. I went by there tonight just to check it out.
It did, yeah.
It is nice to see.
It is. Thank God, we got some people around our area over the weekend because we had snow, so snowmobilers and all the good things that our area needs.
As long as they stay out of the lake.
Well, and I saw that too. Yeah.
I haven't seen anybody on the lake with a snowmobile. Have they been on them, the snowmobiles? I've seen them fishing on them.
I've seen one, one shanty out there.
Out by my house.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, down by Kenwood.
Yeah, I remember seven or eight of them, yeah, down by the city launch.
Okay.
On Saturday. There was a lot of people out. I was surprised.
At least if you drop, go through there.
Still kind of iffy.
I would think.
It is.
Too much snow on that ice.
That's it.
Yes.
That's the hard build ice.
Insulates.
And we gotta keep the snowmobiles out of the roads.
Two of them got smirked out by Thirsties, yes.
Did they?
Yeah. Friday. Anyway, I don't think anyone was killed though.
Oh, I think one was.
Designated Trail Three.
Do worse things in the past sometimes.
That's true.
Somebody did?
No, it, it's designated.
Trail Three, gotcha.
I think it's Trail Three.
Okay.
But it's, if you look at it, at a map, it goes all the way up to, basically up to Evergreen.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And I gotta say that Diggins is being highly utilized.
Which is awesome.
Best place to.
Lot of people out there.
Question, since we're on Diggins, in the day, there was a lot less trees.
That's true.
Because I grew up up there, but, uh, mayor's just looking at me like, where am I going with this?
Well.
I don't know, I was just curious.
Can I say anything?
Yeah.
At any point would Diggins Hill be resurrected to Diggins Hill?
Yeah.
Well, in the, in the current recreation plan that we're gonna be forwarding for approval to the planning commission soon, it's cause for, um, an update to the master plan for, uh, Diggins Hill. And so when that process begins, certainly that will, you know, bring into play whether the old master plan is still valid, or whether we want to make changes to that plan and put in some of the improvements that have been talked about in the past with regard to winter sports, so. Uh, we really, really just need to launch that process at some point in time.
I would also share that.
Nice.
The Cadillac Rotary, um, organization, um, has chosen over the next, at least the next three years as their major project is to make improvements at Diggins Hill. And the first thing that we're going to do is a children's playground, and with a vision that, um, this is really a community project, and we are reaching out to other service organizations. You know, every service organization is having a really difficult time maintaining its membership. So, um, we're reaching out to other service organizations and, and hopefully, I mean, other partners in the community to say, this is the vision that we have for Diggins Hill, the whole Diggins Hill area. And, um, one of the meetings that I had was with the Kiwanis. And we right now currently have one of the most challenging eighteen-hole disc golf courses in the state of Michigan at Diggins Hill, and it's a bit in disrepair. And so the Kiwanis are, um, committed to bringing it back to its like-new status and, um, as part of this renovation that we're talking about. But the vision is just, I mean, it's wide open right now. We would really like to see the hills, you know, groomed for the sledding for the bigger kids, adults, and then a smaller hill for the littles. Bringing back an ice skating rink with a, you know, with a warming hut.
That'd be cool.
Um, hiking trails, um, there's, there's endless possibilities. And we all know, all it takes is money, right?
What about a tow rope? That's a long ways up that hill.
That's what I was thinking. It's, it's old folks, I can only speak for myself. It'd be nice to have something that could take me back up the hill.
The possibilities are endless. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, since you asked the question, that those conversations are happening. I'm meeting with Marcus and Owen and John on the twenty-fifth to kind of come up with a visual, and this is gonna be a working document. Um, but at least so when we're presenting this project in the community, we can give people a visual and get them excited about, you know, how can I help? How can, how can we help? Um, you know, not everybody is a fundraiser, and not everybody is somebody who wants to go out and ask for donations. But maybe somebody wants to get on the end of a shovel, or maybe somebody wants to, you know, there's something for everybody to do.
Look at Kenwood Park.
Yeah.
I mean, we did that, oh my God, a hundred years ago.
Not quite that long ago.
But there was a lot of people just came out to help.
Right, right.
Put it all together and.
Yeah. I mean, if you think about like hiking trails, um, you know, my husband and I have talked about like a consignment art walk. In other words, you know, artists do their outside artwork like we have around the city, right? But what we would do is ask them to put them into our park on, on, along the walkway on consignment. And they have the opportunity to sell that art. We don't own it, but it gives them visibility. And, um, so that's, that's a thought. Um, and also in the northeast corner of that property, on the map that John showed me, there is a place that's, I can't remember how it's worded, but basically it's a connection for Cadillac Pathways, which is out on Seeley Road. And it's a place for them to come into the city and which could bring them into the city down to the White Pine Trailhead.
Now you're talking about snowmobiles?
No, 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 no.
Just walking?
Or fat tire biking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that pathway comes all the way to ISD.
Yep, yeah. So that, at the north, northeast piece of that property, and, you know, when I saw that, I thought, there's another connection. There's, there's a connection to get the Cadillac Pathway people involved in the Diggins Hill project. So, um, there's all kinds of conversations like that we can have out in the community. So Rotarians are excited about it, um, and so on, uh, the first weekend, first Saturday of May is going to be our Rotary auction, and that's what our Rotary auction is supporting, um, is the children's playground area.
So you'll do something similar to, uh, Lake or, uh?
I think it should be something different, but.
Oh, yeah, but I'm just saying.
But that same type of, yeah, yeah. I even asked Marcus, I said, is it possible to do another splash pad up there? Like maybe where the ice skating rink is going to be, and then you could lay something over it.
Only money.
Only money, right? So, so it could be flooded over like a tarp, I don't know. You know, the baseball field there, you know, Cass is just down the way, so, you know, that area could be turned into something different in the summer and something different in the winter, and it really has the possibility of being a four-season recreation area. And that's what the Diggins family donated that property for was recreation, so. So we're gonna bring back a little bit of history, the Rotary is, we're gonna bring back a little bit of history when we have our Rotary auction. Um, and, you know, do some period dress and, you know, educate people on the Diggins family and what they gave, you know, what, what they did for Cadillac, so.
What about the toboggan?
There.
The chute that they had at one point.
Possibility.
You know, apparently it would, it came down the far side and went on the plant.
Oh, we don't want sleds shooting off on the plant.
I don't think so either.
That's kind of. Marcus and John would frown.
Yeah, right, no, I, I think most people would.
Carla, does the school still own the McKinley property?
They do, and so that's always, that's really part of, it's interesting because the city, and I forget the year, actually gifted that property to the school because they needed to build another school in town. And so the city gifted it to the schools, and the schools own that property now. And they can't sell it for less than market value. But we did have some conversation with Jen Brown and, um, you know, asked the question of, well, you know, would the school system consider keeping that property, and the school owns that, and the city owns what they use or what they own, and then we just kind of collectively create a recreation space where it could be used for outdoor education, et cetera, et cetera. But there's also, um, conversation for some, you know, workforce housing up there, which that wouldn't be a bad thing either if they sold that property and we got more housing. Um, what a nice place for the people who live there to have Diggins Park right behind them, so. You know, I think whatever happens with that, it's, it's gonna be okay, so.
Well, thanks for sharing that.
Yes. My question was timely.
It was. It was. And I'm a little bit excited about it too.
Yeah.
So if you get your wheels moving and you want to have some conversation, that'd be great. Rotarians would love to talk.
Just kind of like to know what's going in there, what their, what their thoughts are.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's what this meeting is, is to just start generating conversation, and we really want to hear from the community.
That's what I was gonna say. The community should be the one saying what is in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe when we get to these short-term rentals before people can leave, they gotta fill that out and give us a suggestion because we'll have the public there.
You live right there. You could be the commissioner, man.
Yeah, we're on there. We're up there all the time, yeah. And there's all that space there that's by the tennis courts too, and that's, that's wide open territory.
Where the ice rink used to be.
Pickleball courts.
Yeah, where the ice rink used to be.
Pickleball courts.
Because people.
But the tennis courts need, you know, the Rotary put fifty thousand dollars, I think, towards the, just the revitalization of the tennis courts, but they didn't, they didn't take them down to the bare bones and rebuilt them when they spent the fifty thousand dollars. They just.
Resurfaced them?
Resurfaced them. Is that correct, Marcus?
That is correct, yep.
Yeah, so the tennis courts are in need of, you know.
Full reconstruct.
Full reconstruction. And, uh, you know, I think the community would love to see more pickleball courts.
Yep.
Well, now you have two, two locations pickleball, right?
Yeah.
Don't they have one?
Over, but.
Because I can hear them from my house, Diggins.
Diggins Hill and then over by the, yeah.
By the reserve.
The Cliff Shogun, yeah. And people can play at the wax.
Oh, then you can put some lights up so people who work for a living can go out in the evening and play pickleball.
Ooh.
I mean, it's, it's big. I don't know how big it is in Cadillac, but it's big.
It's being utilized. Quite a bit, yeah.
Yep.
Everybody good?
Everybody's.
Caught up? Perfect, yeah. Staff, any communications we don't know about?
No, none.
Perfect. Uh, no public, so there's no public comment. Other business, we're out. Thank you.
Thank you.